That will be moving forward sooner than later. So that's, back to the planning commission for, you know, consideration of a Keesler support overlay district. Jerry was here if you have any questions, but this is a part of adjunct land use, I think, consideration we had done before. And a similar thing could be, you know, could address also the area around Gate 7 on the west boundary. So there'll be some opportunities to think, you know, and plan with the planning commission on what needs to be done instead of doing it piecemeal, conditional use by conditional use. I think that's the right play for the city. If you have any questions, Jerry will answer right now. I'm just kidding. But I'm here to ask, you know, to answer any questions that you might have.
A question, so the overlay district you have to put in place?
Well, we think it's the right thing to do. We don't have to, but we should do that. Again, you know, our relationship with Keesler and they're very, they've been with us partnering with everything that needs to be done. Right now, I think they train 5,000 AM in a year on cyber security. This will ramp that up and have the facilities to even do more things in the technology where supercomputers and some of these other things that could be located in that park. So, well, I think we need to think about it, you know, and take some action that fits, you know, the, at the high level view of planning and what we'll be rolling out during in that corridor.
Well, have you met with Keesler?
Yes.
And y'all have any type of plan that you were going to bring to us? You keep saying you're sending it back to the planning commission, so what are you going to bring to us to send back to the planning commission?
Well, you want to bring this up, you know, not to take action. I guess, you know, I think this has been, yeah, but you know, this conditional use has been on the table for a number of weeks. I think we need to get it in motion, not to deny anything or, but just develop a plan that makes sense for the long, you know, for the long game at Keesler and this project and Mississippi State as well as, you know, the city of Biloxi.
We just went through this lengthy J-LAS study, you know, about the uses, the proposed uses for around the Keesler area. And one of the discussions that came out of that study was why not create an overlay district around Keesler that would be a support area for Keesler where we can consider uses that would help support Keesler, you know, like computer technology and those kind of things. Not only that, but maybe, you know, certain food establishments, just anything that would help to support the Keesler area. So what we're proposing to do is to present that to the planning commission. And I think what the mayor wants to do is to bring this off of the table and send it to the planning commission so that it can be considered as a part of what we're doing with the planning commission.
As long as it don't affect, you talk about cases of 1.3 billion a year for the city. So you don't want to affect them anywhere, we lose that base.
Now, everything that we're proposing is pro-Keesler. Yeah, it's all pro-Keesler.
Yeah, and this would even add to that impact. I mean, really has the potential for, you know, in talk with General Peterson, some of the things that he's familiar with, especially this kind of technology, supercomputing as far as cyber, you know, he was involved with some of the initial things in Maui, Hawaii. He said now it's like Silicon Valley because it started with just a few facilities. This is sort of the anchor store that will enable a lot of that to blossom.
That's a fine line. You better watch what we doing there. You don't want to lose that base. I say pull it, you're done.
No. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I don't see any departmental reports. We're going to move on to the council report. Mr. Lawrence?
We have a great event that's coming up this weekend, the Blessing of the Fleet. They moved it early. I know they opened shrimp season yesterday. It seemed to me all right, a lot of small shrimp. But they just moved the blessing, trying to catch it before the opening, but it didn't work out. But the blessing would be the 94th blessing, started in 1929. So that'd be this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So y'all come on and enjoy it.
You were there at the first blessing?
Huh? I was there. Yeah, we started on the bay. Remember, we had two that year. One on the bay, one on the point. A lot of people don't know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Back in 1905?
29, now, 105.
All right, thank you. Ms. Newman? No, for it. Mr. Demme?
Just a couple of things. Jerry, did you get a confirmation on 2235?
No, but I'll check on that as soon as we get to the deal.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, this may be something for you and Billy Ray and even Jerry Creel. Addressing easements, I know the city, what exactly is our duty with regard to easement between properties?
Our duty as far as? Grass cutting or laying utilities, fiber, or in what regard?
Maintenance wise. Is it incumbent upon the city to maintain the property as far as grass cutting?
I think technically, some homeowners seem to take that literally where they refuse to cut their grass on the other side of the sidewalk. The majority do do that, but I think the, it depends also where the property line is. I mean, the fact that we have an easement for our line doesn't necessarily mean that we take on the maintenance of the grass.
The part in front of the yard on the other side of the sidewalk, I think for the most part, people believe that that's their responsibility to take care of. However, more so concerned with areas behind homes, behind fences, in between two fences, those easement areas, whose responsibility and obligation is it to maintain those areas?
Well, it depends on what's going in there. Peter said, we don't just go out there and cut the grass on an easement because it's private property. But if there's a, happens to be one of our utilities running through there, let's say a drainage easement, that it's set aside as a drainage easement. And if for whatever reason there's growth in that easement that would, you know, bottleneck water and that kind of thing, then we would go out there to take care of it. But we don't just go out there and maintain it like somebody would their yard. We have the right to go in there if it's necessary for us to go in there. That's the way that the easements work.
Well, there's numerous easements between, in neighborhoods between homes and residents are under the impression that the city will maintain those when grass starts growing up. No water or no drainage is infringed upon by the growth. However, it's still not maintained. And so I don't know if we need to do a better information campaign to inform people that these areas have to be cut and maintained. And it's not incumbent on the city if it's not to maintain those.
Those areas you're talking about with the, with the areas between houses, yes, those are recorded on the subdivision plots. But that's actually an access easement that would allow us to be able to get a backhoe in there if we need to. Typically, the size is seven and a half feet on this side of the property line, seven and a half, which gives us that 15 feet that Billy Ray and his crews need if they have to get something in there to dress up drainage or to get to something in the rear.
Councilman, it's interesting that you should bring this up today. We've just penned and are about to produce a one-page explanation of easements and right away in the B-News going out this next time. It's actually going to press. When will that go out, Cecilia?
Well, we have a link to it on the website. I want to make sure that if you can, just send us a direct link so I can guide homeowners and residents to that, to that information. Thank you.
That was a timely, that was very timely for us to get the announcement out so everybody will read it now, hopefully.
Well, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Some of the real issues, Councilman, is the people that put the, you know, they put the fences up and the easement. And one of the things that article talks about is the right of the city, if it needs to, to remove the fence and not put it back if it's in the easement. That affects a lot of people.
It does. I'm well aware of the process. I think we've gone through some neighborhoods and my warden and had to have fences removed. And I think there's other areas that homeowners don't know that. And these fences are drawn in to increase the size of their usable yard, but it gets in the way of drainage and different utility necessities. Again, thank you for the information. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Demme and Dr. Tisdale.
Yeah, just one thing, that is, school is out and speeding in the neighborhoods now that school's out with small children is just, you know, I know we're short-staffed, but just everybody needs to be cognizant when they're going through neighborhoods. Typically, those neighborhood speeds are 15 or 20 miles an hour, usually 15. But a lot of times when there, if there's a stretch of road with no stop signs or no officer with a speed gun, people speed through the neighborhoods, you know, as a shortcut or whatever. So just everybody be cognizant, school's out, small kids in neighborhoods, please drive the speed limit. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to touch on what George said about the Blessing of the Fleet festivities coming up. That's certainly one of our grand traditions. The committee asked me to emcee the event on Saturday, so I'm very much looking forward to that. I was emceed it last year and I'm looking forward to that event. It's very, 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 it's a great event. Couple of things for Chief Miller. If I can get an update on a couple of things. Pops Ferry Landing had some mailbox vandalism. I think we were going to send an officer out there to, to kind of check things out. And then the traffic committee was going to take a look at the dangerous curve at the skillet where a request for some rumble strips or some kind of deterrent or safety issue could be addressed. Chief, if you're not ready today, maybe next meeting would be appropriate. Okay, thank you, Chief. Like to thank the administration, Public Works, or whoever called it in for the streetlight repair on Osprey. The residents there noticed it. Shortly after I got notice that it was repaired, I was getting calls from the neighborhood thanking us for responding as quickly as we did for that streetlight. Mason Drive, do I understand, Mr. Leonard, that there is a work order number issued for the ditch for the tires and debris and everything in that ditch on Mason?
Right, that was issued. There is, it's on the ditch list.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Got a couple of calls. I told them be patient. We're getting to that. And then I did get a complaint over by the Santa Maria Del Mar retirement community. There seems to be a homeless camp that's popping up around the, around the, there's a lift station and they're using the fence to dry their clothes and I guess they're hanging out there and all that kind of stuff. I don't even know if that's safe to be hanging around that area.
We issued a service call yesterday to Public Works with a copy to the PD basically saying that they, we'll need some PD help when we go in there to clear that out.
Okay.
So they'll work together to take that on.
I appreciate that. And I did find out subsequently that Santa Maria Del Mar does have a non-trespassing letter. And according to them, I haven't verified this, the other property is owned by Harrison County Development Commission or whatever. I haven't verified that yet, but I'm looking into that to see if they need to have a similar letter. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Ms. Barrett?
I just have a couple of things. Want to thank Mr. Leonard for getting several things on a list taken care of. And then with, following up on what Robert was talking about on easements, I know that the property owner is responsible for those easements, but there's a lot of cases that we come in and we dig ditches that a regular lawnmower can't cut and you have to have commercial equipment. And a lot of those easements, those homeowners don't have the ability to keep those clean and the city's not keeping them clean either. And so it's growing up and causing a lot of issues, trash coming down, you know, the ditches and clogging them up, causing it to back up on properties. And so on those smaller ditches, I understand that, you know, it is the property owner's responsibility, but some of those we make them so big that they, they can't keep those up. So in those cases, you know, I think that we need to get those tight ditches on a regular schedule to, you know, to where we don't have those issues. Because I meant normally, the, some of these, some of these ditches that are in there, what's happening, especially speaking of fences, we have fences on the edge and you have tons of water coming through here and it just erodes and erodes and erodes. And then you have fences that are leaning about to fall in because the edge of the ditch is expanding because of the amount of water coming through. And so if we keep them up, that, that would prevent a lot of that. So just a suggestion on those larger ditches that homeowners don't have the ability to take care of with a regular lawnmower and equipment that a homeowner would have. Outside of that, I need to talk to you, Jerry and Christie, after the meeting for just a couple of minutes. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Ms. Lawrence, you have one more thing?
Yeah, y'all put a write-up in the B-News about the easement. Could y'all also add the trash cans? A lot of people don't realize they have to pick their trash cans up and put them out. They got like 12-hour wind in there, Jerry. And a lot of people get calls, they don't put their trash cans back in their yard. So I think you ought to put that in there too and explain it to them that's their responsibility to remove the trash can once it's picked up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. And I have just one thing. I want, I need to see Christie after the meeting or see her sometime soon. And I would like everyone to have a great, wonderful memorial holiday and don't forget the men and women who paid the ultimate sacrifice for our country. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public agenda, citizen comments. We have a total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person, strictly enforced. With that being said, anyone on my left would like to come up and speak. Anyone on my left? Father?
I'm Father Greg Baram and I'm with the Resolution for Loaves and Fishes. We've been around for 40 years feeding the hungry. We are a very stable and financially stable organization. We want to continue that, but we've been informed already of what perhaps the deciding vote might be. So we will respectfully refrain from bringing any more comments and just encourage the council to take a vote. The vote will help us determine which way we should go. But just a reminder, the hungry will be with us always. They're not going anywhere. If we don't feed them, there's probably going to be more acting out difficulties. And we have a moral responsibility. If we say we believe in God, we take care of those people who are in need. And it's present, and I just encourage you, when you vote, vote a moral conscience that God would call us to take care of these people before it would move into something that would be difficult and violent. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Anyone else on my left? Anyone else on my left? Sarah, anyone on my right? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. Please sign in. Give your name and address, please.
Thank you, Father, for that. And I totally agree. But the question here is should nonprofit organizations name on note, Loaves and Fishes be allowed in residential neighborhoods? Well, we say no. And yes, we have petitions. We have a whole room full of people here. They're lining the walls, the back of the walls. Because on just the petitions we had, I have 198 signatures, 95% of the community who are against the location. They're not against feeding homeless, okay? So I'm addressing what the people want, the heart of the people. That's what I'm addressing today. In a previous meeting, I was here once and I said our homes are our heavens on earth and those are our neighborhoods. But right now, we have a problem, Houston, and it's not being addressed thoroughly. And the problems we have, and I'll try to do this, I only got three minutes, vagrancy, loitering, total disrespect for people's personal properties, businesses that, a lot of them signed the petitions, a lot of them didn't, but they asked us to go down there and fight for them because they're having problems. The values of our properties are going down, constant calls to law enforcement for noise disturbances, sitting on people's porches. We know all the problems. As I went from house to house, I didn't just get people to sign them, we talked to these people. I talked to the neighborhood in, on Water Street on the last, where it was, they were so glad that it was gone from that neighborhood, y'all. Am I angry? Maybe just a tiny bit. Healthy angry can be good when enough is enough. When one is angry, it's because they want and need answers, order, and stability. When you have that, when you need, it stirs a person, healthy anger stirs a person to change. And, you know, you could take the 550,000, the building on 1157 is too small for what needs to be done. There needs to be solutions and quit slapping lipstick on everything. You know, we need to, not this three days a week, two times a day, feed the hungry. If you're going to go into it, go into it wholeheartedly and get a building that's big enough. It cannot be in residential and you don't want it in business areas. What if we took the lot right across the street? It's pretty empty. You could build something big enough to feed them three times a week, twice a day. But you don't want that in your business areas and we don't want it in our neighborhoods. And address the real problems. They get enough from people feeding them on the streets. And address jobs, housing, mental health, drug rehabilitation classes, medical, cleaning the city. These people want something to do. Put them to work. I believe that most people want to feel, you know, like they're contributing. Get a building. Mark Marvers got their one on Back Bay. It'd be big enough to put cots in. Let them sleep where it's air-conditioned. Walk the walk. We ask that, I mean, we wonder if you're privy to CB, DG grants, ESG grants.
Thank you, ma'am.
They put acts.
That concludes your time.
Please consider this. Thank you.
Okay, did you give your name? Sign in. Okay, come on up. Yes, sir.
As I said last time, if you choose to vote today on this location, it doesn't keep Loaves and Fishes from going out and doing what they're currently doing right now. I'm imploring you to back up a little bit today. We were just talking about being able to do business with Keesler around the base. Do we want to put this on their doorstep? It's not the location. Biloxi's homeless situation seems to be pretty unique. You don't come off a ramp at DeAbreville and be harassed. You don't come off the ramp at Ocean Springs and get harassed by vendors. Same thing is applied in Bay St. Louis when I go there. So we need to maybe think about what can we do to work with the situation. Several requests went out from the people that were against this to ask to speak with Loaves and Fishes to try to help them and nobody came through. The owner that bought the 255 apartments that actually encompass this building 360 degrees, if you take 255 and let's just say that there are three people in apartment, do the math, this is all going to be sitting on their front porch, basically, with a road in the middle. That doesn't help them. If you look at the businesses that are in there, we have a wonderful collection, black, white, Mexican, if that's the proper word, businesses in there that, they work their businesses. They keep them clean, they provide services to the community, and they're scared based on what happened on Water Street. I challenge you today to ask Chief Miller to come up about some of the reports and stuff that they dealt with, with Water Street. Once again, nothing wrong with Loaves and Fishes. The population density is just simply too dense around that building and that area. Is this how we want to develop out Biloxi? Are we pro-business? Are we going to protect the businesses that are there and look at economic growth? That's up to you all today. You know, what is right? The Bible talks about not profiting off of the poor. Don't run businesses that profit off the poor. Give, give, give. And that's what we've all done. I've donated at Loaves and Fishes, love doing it. And I apologize that we have to stand up, but the location, location simply is wrong. And there are other areas, the guy that owns the apartment complex, Mr. Paul, has offered to buy the building, offer to help with other services to put them in a better location. So I implore you today to just simply say no to the location. Protect your business, protect your assets, just like we want to. If this is good in our backyard, then it should be good in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, anyone else on my right? Come on up, ma'am. Ma'am in the green? Please sign in for me.
I live on Oaklawn Place in Biloxi. I am very concerned about this new location which is proposed. Loaves and Fishes is a wonderful organization and they do a great deal of good, but this proposed location is all wrong. There is no vacant land for homeless people to sleep there. Any vacant land is privately owned. There are a large number of apartment, there, those apartment dwellers who are paying their rent and living in peace are not going to want, and the homeowners in that area on all the streets going down to the beach are not going to want homeless people using their yards as bathrooms. There is only one place in that area for homeless people to go and that is the cemetery. I have friends who are buried in that cemetery. TJ Andros was my son's best friend in high school and he's buried there. I don't like the idea of tents and people using the bathroom on graves. It is simply not a good location. There is no bus service there and there will not be a bus service there because there won't be enough demand. And yet the homeless people need bus service to take them to the clinic on Division, which is enormously helpful to them, and to churches. For all of these reasons, there's no church supporting them there. It's simply a bad location for them. There is an alternative, an excellent alternative, and that is Pass Road. There are areas of Pass Road where there are now homeless encampments. And while we may not approve of this, at least these are wooded areas where the people can live out of sight and not be in other people's front yards and bothering other people. There's a wonderful church there, Fatima, which supports them. There is a bus service which runs up and down Pass Road, which can take these people to work or to look for job interviews and to help them and can connect to services which will take them to Division Street, to the clinic there. That would be a far more suitable location. I ask you to please do not give a permit for a soup kitchen on Judge Stekel, which is a disaster for that whole area and all the homeowners on surrounding streets, and instead give a permit for the soup kitchen where it is most needed, and that's on Pass Road near the present homeless encampments. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, anyone else on my right? Anyone else on my right? It's there. Please sign in.
I don't want to rehash everything that we discussed last time. Most of us don't have a grievance with the mission statement of the organization. We have a grievance with the proposed location. I don't think that's unreasonable. I own land that's technically zone, neighborhood business. Can I put a strip club there? I'm not comparing them to a strip club. I'm saying there is appropriate locations for appropriate things. That being said, it was repeated as part of the fact sheet for today's meeting, but from the original, also from the original zoning meeting. I don't think this should have passed the zoning committee. If council has oversight over the zoning committee, I think y'all may want to review this issue. Stated pretty much in the same language on both sheets, as a part of any conditional use review, the planning committee must determine that the conditional use as proposed will provide for the public interest at this location, is capable, compatible with the neighborhood, avoids- is capable, compatible with the neighborhood, avoids adverse effects on the neighborhoods, maintains self, safe traffic flow, protects property values in the neighborhood, et cetera. It does none of these things. I don't understand how it made it out of committee. Last time, we discussed all of our concerns and adverse effects that allowing this location, what would happen, and I think we have a little bit of a case history, um, you know, at the previous location on Water Street, which is not as densely populated. We kinda know, the police department has data, we, we know about it already. Excuse me. So, that being said, I feel as though, if you vote yes on this, you kinda know what you're giving us. You kinda know what you're doing to us, and I, I just hope that y'all don't do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else left? Yes, ma'am, in the back?
Do I need to write his name? He wants to speak.
Yes, I understand.
Okay. My name is Letitia Hunt. This is my son, Darius Brown. I just wanna start by saying I'm here for my son, and the location is not appropriate for the safety of him. I don't disagree with feeding a homeless. Everyone needs help, but the location is just not appropriate. As Mr. Eugene stated, it goes against everything the planning committee has said, all the adverse effects and everything. So, I'll just turn it over to my son.
Hello, and, um, I find that the location of where you're planning to put this homeless soup kitchen is quite, um, unfit because there is a school bus that goes there, so it's not only myself, but other children that live within the area who will, might be affected by the presence of unknowing people. Yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
All right, all right, thank you, young man. All right, is there, is there anyone else? Come on, ma'am.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Natalie Ricker, and I live on Seal Avenue. I have not been able to be here for the past couple weeks, so just especially in light of recent events. I just wanted to publicly say thank you to Chief Miller and all the officers of Biloxi for all their work, which is always important and sometimes dangerous in keeping us safe, so thank you for that. And thank you also to all of you council members and to the mayor for funding our public safety and also for your careful attention to the governing of our city. Thank you for that. In the interest of the many benefits of building a community based on decency and virtue, I appreciate the opportunity to raise a couple of questions for you. First, thank you to Mr. Glavine for recently revisiting the dispensaries, and I agree with Mr. Lawrence in that there should be clear ordinances about where the dispensaries are so that it's not just a vote every time or a discussion every time, but that that's clear. And my question would be, are we creating opportunities, which are unnecessary, for children and teens to be harmed? Or are we creating opportunities for them to be taken advantage of based on those proximity to our schools and our neighborhoods and our playgrounds with dispensaries? So I appreciate you taking that slowly and taking, seeing how that goes instead of opening it all up and then having to back up for that, so thank you for that. Secondly, in consideration of the new ordinances for the events, I hope that we can make clear the standards of decency and virtue with which we conduct ourselves in our city. That's very important to me and my family, and I would say if anyone's willing to abide by these standards, then we welcome them with open arms. But my question would be, are the consequences severe enough and are the statutes enforced adequately to deter people who choose not to do that? And, um, this question applies whether it's a resident or not. And includes those which, uh, seems to be the issue today of those people who are living on our streets. As you consider Loaves and Fishes' location, I would actually, I will raise the question, not just of is this location okay, but I wonder if we're skipping a more fundamental question. My question would be, of course, feeding people is a noble thing, but there are many ways to do it. So I wonder if this proposed plan, or any plan going forward, are we making sure that the things that we're doing are a backstop to people who are actually in need? Or are what we're doing creating a class of people who are dependent on certain things that we, on other people giving them things and taking advantage of people who are kind enough in heart to do that for them? Are we in danger of rewarding unwanted behavior or even dangerous behavior in neighborhoods like the young man was just talking about? So, in all these areas, I trust you to look through the fog of popular opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes your time. Is there anyone else on my right? Anyone in the?
My name is Artie Desport. I walked the streets for the last week, getting names and petitions, and I've had a lot of stories that's been told to me about homeless people coming around, being on their carports late at night, smoking cigarettes, uh, smoking weed, drinking alcohol. Talked to a guy on Hopkins Street, said broad daylight, he was smoking a cigarette on his porch, and two of them started having sex underneath the bridge with no clothes on. I talked to one of them that was sitting there eating at Patio 44, and the girl took her clothes off to take a shower in front of her kids while they were sitting there eating, and she's got a video. I've talked to one lady that lived next to the fishing loaves down there, next house down. She said one night, a guy got in her house from over there and was threatening her. She thought he was gonna rape her. So her two sons had to come down with knives to get him, back him out of the house. Couple days later, she went to get in her car to go to work in the morning, and there's a guy sleeping in a plastic bag up against a car. She's scared to go to work. Now, how much more we gotta put up with all this crap? Man, I mean, this is bull. Take them somewhere else. They got this big old place down on the point next to High and Drive, belongs to the Marvers. It's been empty for years. It used to be the, uh, the Purina Dog Child Company. It's empty. You could home half of Biloxi in this place. It's so big. Did you ask about it? There's a place on, on, uh, Main Street, a big old pink building, nothing in it. Did you ask them about this? But no, you wanna put it in our neighborhood. We getting tired of it in our neighborhood. People scared to go out of their houses at night. They scared to death. They don't want their kids out there. Is that the way y'all want Biloxi to be? If y'all keep letting it happen, we're gonna end up having tent city up and down the street in Biloxi. Are y'all gonna let it happen? It's up to y'all, man. Y'all make the shots. I'd said enough.
Thank you, Mr. Desport. Hey, is anyone else in the back of the room? Yes, come on up, Mr. Baptiste.
Thank you. Good afternoon, panel. I'm Lester Baptiste, an old sports fan. Been here in the city of Biloxi property the last 30 years. Used to coach down there at the Ananilla Ballpark in the east. Coach teams, coached some of your kids. Come home to spend time with my grandson, but my home is right there off of Bailey Drive, in the same location to where this area is. I'm an old baseball player, used to play for the Biloxi Dodgers, went to college at East Texas, but that's besides the point. Coach you kids from east to west, carried them to Sarasota, Florida, carried them to St. Petersburg, and I look to do some good things for them now. But my home is in that area, and I'm just asking, I don't have anything against Loaves and Fishes, but I'm asking that this not be allowed in the area that I'm in. Because if it, if it does, I'm gonna have to sell my home and things.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Is there anyone else on the right? And anyone else in the back of the room? Anyone else on the right? Anyone else on the back of the room? With that being said, citizen comments are now closed. We're gonna move on to policy agenda, Resolution A.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a social services at 1157 Judge Sickle Avenue.
That was moved by Mr. Lawrence, and it was second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I moved to deny, and I agree with everybody what they said, and also agree with Loaves and Fishes. I think this location is the worst possible thing we could do with it. It was donated to them. They didn't choose to go there.
Lawrence, Lawrence, can we have a second? So, on your move to deny?
It was already moved and second.
I did that.
Okay. Thought it was moved to deny.
Yeah.
I did.
Yeah. Would you wanna move to deny, or do you want to just vote it down?
Well, I have to deny, vote it down, whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
He's moving to deny.
Right.
So you, if you're moving to deny it, then we need a second. If we just wanna vote on it, 'cause it's already been moved in second.
I'll second, I'll second the move to deny all of that.
So it's moving to deny, second by Mr. Glavine.
Right.
Any questions?
Now you have the floor.
Right, any questions? But, all right. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
You got it right?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Yeah, protocol, yeah.
I wouldn't think the location's bad. To go back what I was saying, I think we need to work with Loaves and Fishes. They need to deny this here, and then maybe put up a committee, some of the people from the neighborhood, from Father, somebody from administration, to help see if we can find a location that's better need instead of putting it in the middle of a residential neighborhood. So that's my suggestion, but you need to deny this in this particular neighborhood without a doubt. It does not meet any of the conditional uses. It takes non-conditional uses to pass, and it don't meet any of them. You have to have all nine. So on that, I'd say I'm moved to deny.
Okay, point of order, point of order. Because we, it's already been moved in second and we table it, I'm gonna ask you guys to remove your, um, motion in second, and we'll vote it up or down according to.
Whatever, whatever it takes to.
So, are you willing to remove it?
Sure.
Okay, and, Sir Glavine, okay, and let's just move forward. Okay, Miss, okay, Mr. Glavine, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, um, this is certainly a, a difficult measure that's before us today. You know, on one hand, we, we wanna help the needy like Father, uh, you know, presented to us, and we're, we have the opportunity to do that. But on the other hand, you know, when we campaigned to represent the people who went to the voting booth to vote for their representative, we looked them in the eye and said, "Vote for me. I will represent you and your interest as a citizen of the city of Biloxi." And in this case, we have residences and we have businesses that live in and around this proposed area to put this facility, and it doesn't appear to be compatible with the interest of the citizens and the businesses that are in and around this area. I believe we got more work to do. I believe we wanna support Loaves and Fishes and their mission. I applaud all the volunteers, and I've heard from many volunteers, as I've heard from the people that live in this area and the businesses that own buildings and, and, and have businesses in this area. And, uh, that's why, although I oppose it, I, I too do not oppose the mission. We have to find a way to continue to help those who, who need help. But long story short, I just don't believe it's compatible for this area that it's proposed, proposed for. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to Ms. Newman.
So I feel like I have to answer to God regardless, just like anyone else. This is a decision that I'm gonna have to answer for, and as my business is in this area right around the corner as well, I too have dealt with the homeless. But just like Jesus said, if someone slaps your cheek, give them the other cheek. We are not meant to be living our best lives. We are going to be uncomfortable. Our mission is to help people. Yes, they might give us trouble, but that doesn't mean that we turn our back on them. This too is a conditional use permit, so that means we can pull the permit at any time. So if there is issues, Father, you know, maybe look at, um, security, whatever you need to do, let these people know that you have this opportunity and it can be pulled from us, things like that, so, um, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Uh, Mr. Deming? Nothing.
Yes, I, I'm committed to vote to this. I've committed my vote to vote, uh, for this location because I think it's a better location than where Loaves and Fishes is currently located. Uh, and I have friends on both sides of this issue, uh, and since sometimes I vote with them and sometimes I don't, but it's, as Ms. Newman said, it's a conscience thing with me. I, I don't believe, I don't think any of you believe that we will ever resolve this problem, this challenge to everybody's satisfaction. Yet somehow we've got to manage it better, and we, we've not managed it well in past years. Mr. Creel, if I could ask you a question? Question, please, just for a moment. I was, and, and you were kind enough to answer my question, uh, in a text earlier. But I was under the impression that a conditional use was required for any social action or type of business such as Loaves and Fishes, but, uh, that was not correct. That was not a correct impression. So, it is permitted by right, it is permitted by right in regional business.
That's correct.
Correct. And there are a number of regional business locations throughout the city where Loaves and Fishes, if they acquired such a property, could just go to the Development Review Committee, have what they planned to do approved, whether it's new construction or rehabilitation of an existing building, and go ahead and pull the permits and start construction and open for business.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted, because I, I, that was a misinterpretation on my part. The other thing is, I've asked folks, what's a better location for Loaves and Fishes? Well, if you're south of the bay, most folks said, any place north of the bay would be okay with me. And if you ask people north of the bay, they would say, any place south of the bay or north of the interstate is good with me. And then if you ask folks north of the interstate, they say, as long as it's south of the interstate. Uh, we all realize there's an issue. I believe we all want to do the right thing. So my, my hope is after this vote that all the folks who are here today to express their opinion, because what I heard from just, I think from everybody was, we support Loaves and Fishes and what they do. So, if you, if you really do, after this vote today, do what you can to support Loaves and Fishes, and let's see if we can find a regional business-zoned piece of property that might be able to help better manage this solution, this challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Depp. Um, Mr. Barrett?
No comment. And I'm gonna call for the question after, uh, my comments. I talked to Father Greg, and I understand the mission, and I've always supported Back Bay Mission throughout the years. However, I did walk the neighborhood. Walked the neighborhood, I looked at the apartment complex, and I talked to many, many of the residents. And just like Councilman Glavine said, And just like Councilman Glavine said, we are here to protect our citizens, or at least to adhere what they say. And at the end of the day, I looked at everything.
uh, right now, as you know, uh, our judges, we can't really place the misdemeanor, someone's
I looked at the building and apartment complex by it, and in this case, I have to look at what the citizens are saying.
charged with a misdemeanor, the sheriff will not take misdemeanors.
But I appreciate everyone, and again, we do need to find a place and continue to support
There's no room to take some of these people.
this mission.
There's no room at the jail.
So with that being said, I'm gonna call for the question.
So this is, and when there is room at the jail, the jail charges $35 a day.
All in favor, raise your hand.
So this is a home monitoring system where people would be charged, they would charge
Dr. Tisdale, Ms. Newman, all against? Okay, five, two-five.
the city $10 a day, and it would give our judges some, some ability to impose, uh, home
Okay, I need a motion in, motion in the second on the consent agenda.
sentencing, sort of, uh, home monitoring.
It's a move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
So you're gonna arrest them, but you're gonna stay at home?
Need a second? Second by Mr. Barrett.
When they're charged, when they're charged, and they're, uh, uh, in the past, the judge,
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, a couple of things. Folks on this, Johnson DSA, are we just renewing the same contract?
if there was room at the jail, the judge could, uh, charge and, and say, "You're sentenced
Yeah.
And it's running for a year?
One year. One year.
to 10 days in jail, 20 days in jail," and we would pay for that.
One year. And we looked at creating any of our own buildings where we could do the same thing,
Well, there's, the jail is not taking people now.
because we had that big piece of land right there off Old Street.
There's no room.
I know we'd have to build a building there.
So this is a way that they can be, it's basically house arrest.
We got some ideas on that.
So, so I was just wanting to check on that.
But, but we have it as a pilot program through the end of this fiscal year, not to exceed
And on a court here, what, what exactly, what is this pilot program? Is this something they putting into effect?
$1,000 a month. Want to see how, how it works out.
I mean, is there anything that we ever looked at, uh, building something ourselves? Was it a 10th city, was it somewhere, I mean, you know, can't, I make a problem with any city that's going on right now. Criminals need to be charged, they need to be penalized, which they did wrong. But this stuff is just letting them walk and stuff like that, not charging them not to do any good. They just keep doing the same thing over and over. So I mean, I don't know if we need to look, step up. If the county can't handle it, then the city of Biloxi needs to handle their problem. If we have to build something, then we need to look at doing that. I mean, right now, like you said, we can't arrest them, but I can't send them to jail. There's no room. Well, that, that, the criminals know that, so that's not good for us. So I don't know what else we can do, but it's something, you know, maybe we need to expand our system itself.
Well, this, this is a, it's, it's, it's a step, but it's a small step. But, you know, we think it'll make some impact.
Well, I hope so. You know, I mean, I hope anything we're doing has got to help. But I mean, I think we need to look at something in the future where you gotta put these people in jail that do wrong, let's say.
So I met with the sheriff and the other chiefs in the area today, and, and all the cities are, are, are suffering with the same problems. A couple of things, uh, the jail is short 70, uh, 70 jailers, and they can't seem to get anybody hired there. And it's, it's the same problem we're seeing with most businesses. So they have a shortage in jailers, and the state, uh, is leaving their prisoners at the county jail longer than they should. And there's some economic advantages for them to do that. So they can only pay, uh, uh, or by, uh, state law, they can only pay the county $20 a day for the prisoners that are leaving there, when in fact, uh, it costs MDOC $78 a day. So it's, it's more beneficial for them to leave their, their prisoners at the county jail. If they were to pick those prisoners up, from what the sheriff told me today, we would have more room there. Still would have a shortage of jailers, but they would have more room. And the sheriff is, is actively pursuing that now, to see what he can, see if he can force them to pick those prisoners up when, in a more timely manner.
Yeah, I mean, they saving $58 a day, and it's costing us jail time for the people to do things wrong.
Right.
But they getting, but we losing again. And somehow, we have to protect the people in Biloxi that put, from the criminals that don't do the right thing. I'm not talking about somebody cut their grass, I'm talking about somebody robbed somebody, the bad deals, the drug deals that go down, stuff like that.
Right. So the, the issue is, is not with felony charges, the issue is strictly with misdemeanor charges. Felony charges, there, there's nowhere around it, the sheriff has to accept those prisoners. But misdemeanor charges, by law, the sheriff doesn't have to accept them. He will, I believe, if he can get enough jailers and he can get enough room. I think he would, he, he would oblige us by taking more of those prisoners. So we met this morning and had a long conversation about it, and I, I gained a better understanding of the problem that they're having myself. Doesn't help us with our problem, but they're undergoing some pretty significant challenges themselves.
All right, thank you.
Robert?
Good.
It's why you're sitting there, so you don't keep getting up and down. Um, this program, is this only for convicted misdemeanors? Or is this for?
Yeah, they would have, they would, it would have to be during the sentencing. Yeah, it wouldn't be, you know, after the arrest, it'd have to be after the judge has sentenced them, is that, that's when he would actually impose this.
Okay. Uh, Peter?
Yes?
Do you know, does anybody know the statistics on how many people we sentence to actual jail time in Biloxi? For misdemeanors?
That's some, that's something I can, we can pull, but I don't, I couldn't tell you right now.
I mean, that would just give us a good understanding for what our cost exposure really is. I mean, even if it was 35 a day, this is less for a conviction, but it'd, it'd be interesting to know what our cost exposure actually is for housing or monitoring convicted, um, misdemeanors.
I think, I think when they know, if they know there's no, they're aware if there's room or not, I think before they sentence them, because they can't, I believe that's right.
That's right. So we had a long, like I said, a long conversation about that today, where the county jail has told us that if there is room, they will certainly take, uh, anyone that's, uh, uh, that has been sentenced, that they will take them, if there's room to put them, that they would take them. So currently, we're paying, we're paying $35 a day for the prisoners that we do have there. Uh, and felonies, you know, once they've been bound over, we, that ends, but with a misdemeanor, as long as they're there, we're paying that.
Just out of curiosity, Chief, you may not know this, but if we pay $35 a day, what does the state pay?
The other, this, well, I, the state, the state pays $20.
I thought you said that they don't pick them up, so that's what they pay just in general, $20?
That's what they pay, and that, that's, that's, uh, that's under state law, but that's all they're allowed to pay.
Wow.
Which we know that it, I know the, the Sheriff's Department, somewhere between $35 and $40 a day is what it costs them to house a prisoner. So they're losing money on that end. The state is $78 a day is what it costs them to house somebody in the state penitentiary.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence, you got anything else?
Yeah. Well, the only one left, and I was talking about the last.
Might as well. I guess they don't give anybody else anything.
Right. Uh, on C, this program, I have a problem with this. When this was passed, it was supposed to be passed as a PUD, and a PUD required three acres. In the process of going through the last thing, they signed a covenant, three people that own top property, to keep the RM20 on half of that piece, that land, the three acres. And that's the covenant, it's forever, until something happens, whatever. The problem is, when you did that, you have no three acres left to have a PUD. So according to, wait a minute, according to our own rules, a minimum of three acres is a PUD. So don't come in and say that's not the law that you have.
That's not correct, Mr. Lawrence, that's not correct.
Yes, it is.
The.
That was, that was the paperwork you gave us when we doing that.
That's right.
Right.
The application that was submitted was for 3.78 acres on this project as a whole. It's a two-phase project, with the hotel being the first part of the project, to the first phase of the project. The covenant that was signed was like a private covenant, where there was an agreement that even though it was a part of the PUD, that they had agreed to only use that second phase for residential, to accommodate the neighbors, but it doesn't reduce the size of the PUD. I mean, it's still, it's still a part of the 3.78 acres.
It can't be half the land.
They did not separate it, they, they did not separate.
The top part.
Second phase from the first phase. It's all still within the.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna do a little dance? It's RM20 forever. So if it's RM20 forever, it's not, it cannot be a PUD.
They did not, they did not agree that the zoning would remain RM, RM forever. It's still a part of the PDHB, which, uh, would, normally would have allowed them to do anything within PDHB. That was just an agreement they signed, committing to the neighbors that they would only do Phase Three with an RM20 use on it, but it doesn't remove it from the PD. It's, there's still 3.78 acres there.
It includes only the one piece of land. We tried it a while ago with the, the 40 townhouse and 30, you can't do two things on one piece of land.
Sure you can.
You can.
You can, you can build apartments in commercial zone.
That doesn't qualify for a PUD.
You can, you can build apartments in commercial zoning, which, I mean, you know, based on what you're saying, you wouldn't be able to build those apartments in that commercial zoning if, if some, but this is just a, this is just a covenant, yes, that they signed, that they would, even though the property is in the PD, that we will only develop that, that second part there, the second phase, as multifamily residential. They can do that within the, the confines of the ordinance. It doesn't reduce the size of the PD.
Well, how can it not reduce the size of the PD when half the land can only be built RM20?
Well, if they subdiv, if they subdivided the property out and removed it from the PD, we'd have a problem. But they did not remove that second phase from the PD. They just agreed to build it as apartments or townhomes.
It done, I think it's done, because they didn't think they were gonna question. You can't, I mean, you just can't do what you say you're doing. According to the rules, what we have, we supposed to be buying by the ordinance.
And that's exactly what we're doing.
You're not.
That's exactly.
You're allowing two things on one piece of land. So if it's not three acres, if half of it is not three acres, it's, it's less than that, you can't have the PUD.
We do, we do PDs all the time. A PD is typically a phased project. Usually what they do is come to us, "We want to do a PD for this entire piece of property, but we only have the financing to do Phase One right now, so we're gonna do Phase One." And then as they generate revenue from Phase One, then they come back to us with a plan for Phase Two. But this was, this was all discussed when this project came forward. This was part of the compromise, is that we will do the hotel upfront, but we agree to do the second phase as multifamily residential to accommodate those neighbors. We talked about this as transitional zoning, that you always go from the heavy commercial, you step down to the multifamily, and then you step down to the single family, and it provides a transitional buffer for those people that live on Father Ryan there. But it did not reduce the size of the PD.
I don't see how you can say that, when you can't use it for that.
It, this, this is.
Why you do a RM20, what it was originally?
This, this is not new. PUDs and PD, PUDs have been around forever. I mean, ever since zoning.
And they all minimum, and I don't know that you chopped any of them up like this.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Creel. Any last comments, George?
Yeah, I, I can't support something that to me is illegal on the table. I don't care if you table it and let them give me a legal opinion, and that's fine, I'll go for that. But other than that, you can't support something like that. So there's no such thing, whatever we do, you just kind of make it up as you go along.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Ms. Newman? And Mr. Demming? Dr. Tisdale?
Yeah, on the court, court programs, the ankle bracelets, so I'm, I'm thinking if, if I'm in court for a misdemeanor and I'm found guilty, uh, from what I understand, the jail, under some circumstances, won't take me as a prisoner over there. And some misdemeanors may involve incarceration, and some may not, I assume? Or do they all have that option of incarceration?
I think they all, in our ordinance, the judge can sentence up to 30 days.
Okay, so, so if they don't take them, they're at the Harrison County Jail, and they've been found guilty, then what does the judge do? Just release them on their own recognizance? Like, talking like an attorney, I don't know what I'm talking about.
If he sentences them through a formal sentencing procedure, uh, the chief had mentioned that, uh, the sheriff i- is somewhat obligated to take them, but, but that's still subject to if there's room.
Right.
So what happens then?
Right, if there's no room, I'm just walking the streets until, until I, until I check in and say, "Do they have room to put me in, in jail yet?" I don't think anybody's doing that.
It could be like a waiting list. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure of the mechanics, but it's probably something like that.
Anyway, I, I think the ankle bracelets are cost-effective means, they give you another option to deal with these issues, because I know it's very frustrating.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavine?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Mr. Barrett? None? Okay, Mr. Demming?
I'm sorry, sorry, jumped back in. I don't know how this council feels, or Chief, a lot of the, just out of curiosity, I don't know what our judges are sentencing people to spend time in jail for misdemeanors, what type of misdemeanors those are. I would maybe theorize that the system financially would be better if we were to use it primarily for anybody convicted and sentenced to jail time for anything that wasn't a violent crime? I don't know, can you tell me maybe some of the stuff that we're actually sentencing people for?
Sure, so that, that would be completely up to the judge, and sometimes it's more than the charge itself, sometimes if there's multiple charges, if someone is continually brought in for the same thing, trespassing at one of the casinos, uh, I could, I could see where he would, he would impose jail time if possible, if it's a repeated offense. Certainly domestics require some cooling off time, that may be something that he would, you know, especially if it was a repeated offense, that would probably be something that he would impose jail time for. Shoplift, and, and that's, that's an enhanceable offense, you can have first, second, third offense, shoplift, and that would be something, you know, at some point, uh, you, you have to do something other than fine them and send them home, you know, depending on the circumstances.
I agree with that. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Okay, and I have nothing, I'm gonna go ahead and call. Okay.
I'd like to ask all the tables, see, so I can, this sentence, to get an Attorney General opinion?
Okay, it's been moved, properly moved, uh, is there a second on C? Is there a second on C?
Yeah.
No second on C? Fail for lack of motion.
I thought I at least tried it.
Well, you tried it. All right, I'm gonna call for a question on consent agenda, all in favor? Case seven zero, any objections, George?
Uh, C, five times.
C, five times, all right. Ms. Newman? Demming? Dr. Tisdale? Glavine?
Have none.
Mr. Barrett? None? Okay. All right, we're gonna move on to code enforcement. Mr. Creel?
Okay. Item A, Laverne A. Burden, 240 Wisteria Lane, that case has been resolved. Item B, John Disbrow, Zero Keller Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item C, Cheryl Michelle Evans, 335 Jim Money Road, that case has been resolved. Item D, Gwen H. Galot, 1059 Lafayette Street, this property is still in violation.
Jerry, Jeffrey Miguez texted me a little bit ago, and this is his grandmother. He said she hasn't owned this property for two and a half years, and she passed away a year ago.
That's correct, yeah. We've talked to the son, we talked to her son about this property, and he said that what happened, she did a reverse mortgage on this piece of property, and that she's actually out of it. Uh, it's under HUD right now. We've tried to communicate with HUD, but, you know, it's hard to get an answer from them. But her name is still listed on this, so this would not go back on her, what we would do if we clean up the property.
I thought I at least tried it.
Well, you tried it. All right, I'm gonna call for a question on consent agenda. All in favor? Okay, seven, zero. Any objections, George?
C, five times.
C, five times, all right. Ms. Newman? Demming? Dr. Tisdale? Glavine?
Have none.
Mr. Barrett? None, okay. All right, we're gonna move on to code enforcement. Mr. Creel?
Item A, Laverne A. Burden, 240 Wisteria Lane, that case has been resolved. Item B, John Disbrow, Zero Keller Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item C, Cheryl Michelle Evans, 335 Jim Money Road, that case has been resolved. Item D, Gwen H. Galat, 1059 Lafayette Street, this property's still in violation.
Jerry, Jeffrey Miguez texted me a little bit ago, and this is his grandmother. He said she hasn't owned this property for two and a half years, and she passed away a year ago.
That's correct. Yeah, we've talked to the son, we talked to her son about this property, and he said that what happened, she did a reverse mortgage on this piece of property, and that she's actually out of it. It's under HUD right now. We've tried to communicate with HUD, but, you know, it's hard to get an answer from them. But her name is still listed on this, so this would not go back on her, what we would do if we clean up the property, there'd be a special assessment on it, but my understanding now is that our communication would be with HUD about the special assessment, not with Mr. Galat.
So even if we close this case, and her name's the one that's on this deal instead of HUD, would we have the right to go and charge them for this?
Not the Galats, no.
No, no, I'm saying, well, we have the right to charge HUD, but her name's on this, not theirs.
Well, that, that's one of those situations, like the state of Mississippi, where we would put the special assessment on the property, and if for whatever reason the property resold, we would probably have a good chance of collecting the special assessment back. HUD would not pay it.
This won't affect their family in any way.
That's correct, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I would like, Nathan, yeah, I know, you and I talked about this earlier, but it's a sin that her name's even out there like that. If somebody supported city Biloxi, are we doing everything right? We naming things after and everything else? I mean, it's just a sin her name even shows up on this thing, and she hadn't owned the property, and it should be listed as HUD to me, it shouldn't be her. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, that case is closed. Move on to E, Sheila Herbert.
Item E, Sheila Abear.
Abear.
622 Cop Street. I would ask for 30 days on this. I've had a conversation with Ms. Abear, and what she's going to do is to secure this house until she finishes up with another one she's working on, so I would ask for 30 days.
I'll move that.
Okay, moved by Mr. Lawrence, I'll second it. All in favor? Okay, seven, zero.
Okay. Item F, Julia Nieto Gomez, 9066 North Oaklawn Road, this property's still in violation.
Anyone here to speak on Julia Gomez? Anyone here to speak on Julia Gomez? Someone in the back? Julia Gomez, come on up, please. Hi.
Um, yes, that's my house, my trailer, the renters left everything. The renters not paying me for more than six months, and I already cleaned a little bit, I used four dumpsters already, and I don't have more money for putting on this. And for right now, is the house is for sale.
It's for sale?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. How much time would you need to get it in compliance?
I'm not sure.
Not true.
Depends. I'm trying to put another two dumpster, or clean a little more.
Do you have someone that's looking at buying it?
Um, no.
Not now?
Ms. Gomez, so if we were to give you a 60-day extension, would you be able to have it cleaned up in 60 days?
Probably.
Okay.
Okay, make the motion.
I'll make a motion for a 60-day extension.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Barrett, second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions? All in favor? Seven, zero. Okay, gives you an extra 60 days, okay?
Thank you.
Go.
Item G, ODS Swetman et al., Zero Stronje Avenue, that case has been resolved. Item H, Louis Tron and Knock Vin, 180 Oak Street, that case has been resolved. Item I, Guy Tron, 523 Roy Street, that case has been resolved. And item J, Larry Allen, 334 Crusus Street, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone on behalf of Larry Allen? Anyone on behalf of Larry Allen? Consider that matter closed. Gonna move on to routine agenda. I need a motion on the routine agenda. Moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Do we need to update, Peter, Mike, on money? Have we received any extra money?
1.07 million, not, not in the system. Will be here by the first meeting of the June...
How much was that?
1.07 million.
All right, thank you.
First, first meeting in June.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all in favor? Seven, zero. Motion care, need a motion to recess? Or is this adjourned?
I'll, I'll make that motion with a, with a reminder that we have the insurance group, Mr. Lawrence and Mr. Glavine, and I are meeting with folks about employee insurance after this meeting, so, that's all. Thank you. I'll make that motion, though, to adjourn.
Second.
And you're second. Remember, Biloxi High have some more graduates today at 6 o'clock. All in favor? Seven, zero. Much care.